Langness?
Here.
Grady?
Here.
Benny?
Here.
Here, Singer?
Here.
Allen?
Here.
I refer to your eyes for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next up we have the consent agenda. Is there anything anybody would like to add or remove at this time?
Could we move up the Fire Department before anything else?
That would be C2, which would be action on request for purchase of ambulance. We can move that right after the consent agenda. Take care of that before we go into our joint Plan Commission meeting. All right, is there any other changes to the consent agenda?
Move of approval.
Second.
It's moved in second to approve the consent agenda. Michelle, would you please read?
Approval of the council minutes of November 15th and December 20th, 2016. Approval of payment of city invoices processed through January 11th, 2017. Acknowledgement receipt and filing of the Library Board minutes of November 21st, 2016. The report of manually issued checks for December 2016. The Parks and Recreation Board minutes of November 16th, 2016. The Landmarks Commission minutes of September 1st, October 6th, October 7th, November 3rd, December 1st, and December 7th, 2016. And the financial reports for December 2016.
I think Burris needs to stand alone. All right, is there any further discussion? All right, roll call, Michelle.
Langness?
Hi.
Grady?
Hi.
Benny?
Hi.
Gadel?
Hi.
Singer?
Hi.
Allen?
Hi.
Motion passed and move on to C2, which is action on request for purchase of ambulances. Cameron?
Yes, I had a conversation with Chief of EMS, Assistant Chief of the Fire Department, Tom Liedert, as well as some other members of the Fire Department to discuss purchase of an ambulance. This is a purchase, we would be replacing one of our four ambulances. The city purchases the vehicles, the city owns the trucks, the ambulances, but they are staffed by the Fire Department. Representatives from the Fire Department are here to answer some questions and correct anything. I'm going to try sharing, but I know they have a lot more detail too if you have questions. But essentially, we have four ambulances and those ambulances, as you can see by the material that was provided in the packet, get a lot of miles in the thousands of calls that are answered or responded to every year for EMS service. And so this is really changing out or replacing unit 1280, which was purchased in 2000. It now has 116,208 miles on it and we don't want to have ambulances that can stall by the roadside. It's, as everyone can understand, one of our vehicles, we want to make sure is well-maintained and operational at all times. So the request is to purchase this ambulance and funding for the ambulance would come from existing Fund 210 where we have, we've set aside funding for vehicles and equipment replacement for the Fire Department. And the difference between the cost of the ambulance and what remains in balance in Fund 210 will be covered through borrowing later this year.
Are there any questions from council? Benny?
How much are we contributing to that Fund 210 annually? And it appears it probably isn't enough.
That fund is ours, it's a city fund, and I believe this year's contribution went actually to, directly to the Fire Department in the way we modified our budget. However, this is money that was already in the fund that's a balance from prior years. I think we contribute or deposited in that fund $50,000 a year, as I recall.
And that's supposed to take care of rescue and fire vehicles?
Well-
Never going to meet it, obviously.
It's not by itself, that's for sure.
What kind of interest rate are we talking about for this state trust fund?
I don't have that information for tonight. We would have to come back with the, with that information before a borrowing would take place. So I can get that for you, but I don't have it this evening. I anticipate though that we would use a state trust fund. The rates there are much lower than we find elsewhere. For such borrowings, I would, this could easily be a state trust fund loan or it could be tied to a construction project. We'll talk about construction projects in future meetings, but if we did a state trust fund loan, we could anticipate, depending on the interest rate, either borrowing through the state trust fund and then rolling that debt into a larger construction project later next year, or borrowing directly from the state trust fund for the life of the loan. But I can get that information for you, that's not available this evening.
When the agreements are made with the townships for the contributions that they make towards annual operating expenses, is there any consideration given to these capital expenditures when that number is figured?
Tom and I talked about that a little bit in our discussion about the ambulance. And in prior years, that has not been a consideration. So that is definitely something that we need to consider moving forward is how and what amounts should be, if any, contributed from our surrounding townships that enjoy the benefits of the service and, and like us, pay a relatively or extremely low rate compared to what, what service we're being provided.
There's been this idea that there were some fire trucks that were owned supposedly by the townships. Were those paid for then differently somehow than the ambulances?
Yes, I believe so. The Fire Department maintains, maintains an account or has in the past maintained an account where they have set aside funds from, from their rural contributors to funding operations. And those monies have been used to purchase vehicles that are considered or have been previously considered rural, I'll put that in quotations, rural trucks. It's one department and we, we're trying to step away from using those terms, but those trucks were indeed purchased out of those monies rather than directly from a city borrowing or a city fund.
Now, I think this vehicle, number 1280, obviously has served its useful life. I think it's appropriate to be replacing it, but boy, I really question that the townships are paying their fair share here for this kind of expenditure.
Mr. Allen?
No, I just wanted to check with Tom and make sure that, you know, we're bringing as financially responsible as we can in the equipment. Obviously, we want to have good equipment. If you want to come up and tell us some about the equipment, it's in the physical control life, what's needed there.
First of all, this is my first time doing this, but a lot of you don't even know me, I think. I've only been introduced to a few of the council members and I was hired last February 1st when the Fire Department broke away, became their own separate entity. So Whitewater Fire Department, Inc., hired me on as the EMS Division Chief. But my history is 42 years in EMS. I started out as a true volunteer in Burlington with my father. My career is with the City of Racine Fire Department as a paramedic firefighter, retired there in 2011. But I moved out here in 1995 and wanted to help the community join the Whitewater Rescue Squad and stayed there till 2012. So I'm back, but very interesting, Lynn and I had a short talk at retirement luncheon the other day. And just to give you an idea, that's a big bite for me too when I think, when I look at what some of the townships are paying us or not paying us. Just to give you an idea, City of Racine Fire Department, we contracted with three neighboring villages that had a total of 3,000 people. You've probably heard some of them. One Point, North Bay, and the Village of Elmwood. City of Racine charged them $440,000. So I don't know if you guys know what we're charging the townships now, but it's a, it's a far cry from that. And I totally agree that we have to take a big look at what the townships are paying us. And, and I just went to a meeting with the Town of Richmond and, you know, this business is very, very, very expensive, you know, on an ambulance like we're looking at here. Big money, you know, heart monitor, $30,000. And someone made a comment to me that, well, our township only does 6% of the, the total calls for service. And I said, well, then, I'm not trying to be a wise guy, but how about we send 6% of our fire trucks to your fire then? You know, I mean, this is not a whole lot different than your car insurance. You pay a lot of money year after year in the hopes that you never need it. But this whole picture, all that equipment we got downstairs costs a lot. And you pay to have the service and when you use it, you pay a user fee. So I don't know if you guys have been aware, but I've instituted some things in the city like a lift assist fee. We have people calling us to lift their residents up and, you know, we'll give the first so many calls gratuity, but we also have facilities that are calling us that have staff. And, and they're calling us to pick their residents up off the floor. And, and I had a problem with that. I said, you know, we did, we went to one facility 13 times last year when they had staff. So now they're paying us a fee to do that. It's a user fee. So I am really, would love to come back sometime, we have more time, and talk more about the future of the Rescue Squad because it's very blurry to me. We did over 1,500 calls last year. In fact, we were up 157 calls from last year and transported over 1,000 people. And the numbers just keep going up as people become more, you know, needy, shall we say? And the elderly population keeps growing. So I am very aware of, of, I have my ideas on how we should spread the load here too. But what happened with the ambulances, and it was while I was, I left here in 2012 and came back last February, there was a time a couple of years ago where, where a new ambulance should have been purchased and didn't get purchased. And, and you guys know the history of what was going on a couple of years ago. So, you know, I don't, I don't know, there's no blame to pass around, but when you look at our fleet now, some of you may be thinking, well, heck, didn't we just buy them an ambulance? And, and it was actually last, Shannon, Lieutenant Shep is here, she's in charge of our maintenance and vehicle operations. So we put 1282, which is the top ambulance on the list in service. I think I put June, but actually it was probably closer to May. But it amazed me, even though we rotate our ambulances so they all don't get piled on with mileage, that this new ambulance already has 18,000 miles on it. But if you look down towards the lower third of the page or lower part of the page, it talks about how far we go when we transport. You know, it's not like a fire truck where you go five miles out of town and, and it come back. You know, we're going to Lakeland, we're going to Mercy, we're going to, you know, Fort more of, most often, but we also go to Aurora Summit, we go to St. Mary's Jamesville, we go to Mercy Walworth, but that's it. I've drawn a circle that we're not going any farther than that. Even though some people want you to, take them wherever they want to go, you know, we're not brown cab and we're not a private ambulance service. So we need to keep our resources and our rigs and to cover our people. But when I first came in here, I thought, what do we need four ambulances for? But I got my eyes open and it's due to the age of the fleet. You know, if you look on our list here, the second newest ambulance is 1283 and it's approaching eight years old already. So if you take the average life of an ambulance being maybe four or five years, you know, when that thing hits, you know, 10 years from now, how many miles will it have on and how old will it be? And that's where we're at. You know, if, if an ambulance would have got purchased a couple of years ago, I wouldn't worry so much about how old our fleet's getting, but we had several breakdowns this summer alone where it got scary because we had, we had two cases where the patient was on board, you know, the rig starts smoking. And it was smoke, it was a EGR valve issue. We also had a transmission fail twice at the hospital. We had, the ambulance wouldn't start. Once at a UW football game, it wouldn't start. And I'm just finding out with the volume calls we run, you know, every car accident automatically gets two ambulances. So three times during the summer, I had two ambulances in the garage being repaired. So one car accident knocks out everything we got and we, I was surprised too. I did a survey on how many times we do double calls. I even had a chat with the fire officers because they were surprised. I said, how, how many times you think we went out last month, had two calls going on at once? And people guessed once or twice or, but it was closer to 10, you know, where you had two calls going on at the same time. So one rig's going to Lakeland, the other one's going to Fort, those ambulances are out of town for quite a while. So the other thing we're getting loaded up on is events. College-related events, the Whitewater Half Mile Marathon, you know, we get approached with a lot of this stuff. The freshman move-in day, you know, 1,500 new freshmen that want to drink a lot. UW Police actually asked us to staff a crew of, of three people for the morning and another crew for the afternoon, plus, you know, football games going on. So you're tying up an ambulance to do that. And I've actually increased the rate for, for that too, because I thought, you're getting by way too cheap. If, if you would have to hire Rye Brothers or Paratek ambulance or Medex private companies, it would cost you a lot more than what they were paying us. So we have expenses to cover. We have a payroll and we have a new ambulance to cover and insurance. And I'm really trying to pick away at some of these things that are surprising me that we never charged for before.
Thank you. So that answers your question?
Yes, thank you. So the total price for people at home or that don't have a packet is $286,000.
Right.
Okay, so along with the lines of what Mr. Benny said, you know, I think we need to look into, I, I trust that you've completely looked at the cost and you're doing the best job that we can, best deal we can get. But let's look into the townships and we also need to restructure this revolving equipment fund though at some time in the future so that it stays solvent and we can continue to replace the equipment as it needs to be replaced.
Right, I mean, you're talking 170 in there now and if we, you know, the idea, I'd like to put an ambulance, you know, in a four-year rotation, well, that alone is 60 grand a year just for an ambulance, not counting our fire rigs.
With that, I move C2.
Second.
All right, it's moved in second to approve C2. Is there any further questions or comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Roll call, Michelle.
Grady?
Hi.
Benny?
Hi.
Gadel?
Hi.
Singer?
Hi.
Allen?
Hi.
Langness?
Hi.
All right, motion passes and move to our next item, which is our joint meeting with the Plan and Architectural Review Commission. So, Mr. Meyer, do you want to call your meeting to order?
The joint meeting of the City of Whitewater Plan and Architectural Review Commission and County Council, scheduled January 17th, is called order. Do we need a roll call on that?
Greg Meyer?
Here.
Lynn Benny?
Here.
Tom Hensbaker?
Here.
Bruce Parker?
Here.
Christine Spieas?
Here.
John Tanis?
Here.
Tom Miller?
Here.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to item number two on the agenda, is verication of proper legal notice.
Just providing your packets.
All right. Then we'll move on to item number three, presentation of the proposed plan amendments by the consultant and the city staff.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and get us started tonight. I think there is at least one item that will, that has come up and stirred a great, great deal more interest than I believe was anticipated. But this, to give you some background, I know, I know Chris was Pritchard as well as our representatives for Vandoval can give some history here. But we, we've been working on this project throughout 2016, receiving regular updates from the city planner in terms of the material and what would be coming in terms of the comprehensive plan amendment. Primarily, this amendment is dealing with data that needed to be updated in the comprehensive plan. Simply by virtue of a plan that exists for 10 years, there needs to be some things that get changed or corrected. That was the intent of this plan being, being amended or this amendment. I will mention there are one item that was added after the most recent Plan Commission meeting where there was discussion. And I have received multiple phone calls from residents who are concerned either, either about the change or about the level of communication with the public regarding the change. This process, because we anticipated not having anything that would stir the waters, we followed the standard processes counseled by our consultant, meeting legal requirements. And all involved had no knowledge of any prior, I guess, activity or heated discussion regarding a parcel of land located west of our bridge to well number nine and south of Walworth Avenue. So I know that our, the, our folks from Vandoval are going to be able to talk a little bit about that as part of their presentation and answer any questions anyone has, but I wanted to just make clear that it's not something that is intended to be controversial or to cause any problems with the passage of this, this plan. It's going to be the council and Plan Commission will need to decide whether that should stay in or perhaps be taken out and discussed at a later date if that's a, if that's a concern for anyone to give history. I know that there were some folks conversing regarding this, this potential change to, and what, I don't know, we have a map that everyone can see, but it's this property west of, west of well number nine, the bridge to nowhere as people call it, west of that bridge and south of Walworth Avenue, that has been designated in our future land use map. It's not a zoning map by any means, a future land use map as just future residential, single family residential. The proposed future land use map includes it as mixed use. And that is, that is the piece I'm talking about. So just to make sure everyone understands, it's not something that, if, if it's the council desire or Plan Commission's desire to hold off on that and pass the rest, I don't think staff would, staff would stay in your way. I do think however, the reason it's there is because, given the location, if we are talking about very moderate, I'm talking, thinking of credit union or a dealership of some kind, things like that, those are the types of things that could go in that mixed use space and we would expect to not be hinder, I guess, the environment that we want to create and promote for a single-family residential on the majority of that property as well as east and north of that property. Let me go over my notes and make sure there was not anything else. Oh, simply I was going to state that we knew about this in December. I didn't mention it at the December 20th council meeting, expected there not to be a big, much, much by way of the event of the amendment. So that is why it's here tonight and for purpose of expediency, both groups are meeting together. So with that, that intro from me, I will turn time to our city planner and representatives from Vandoval.
Thanks very much. Good evening, my name's Jackie Mish. This is Mike Slavney. We work for Vandoval and Associates and we've been retained by the city to help guide the city through the process of amending the comprehensive plan. I just want to say, before I forget, you know, we were talking about those map changes that we're going to consider later on this evening. One thing that we do have the ability to do is to take an individual vote on each of those map changes so that way we can move the process forward with or without certain map change. So this, you know, as Cameron said, this was primarily an effort to update background data for the comprehensive plan. And it was also response to the fact that the city has updated their zoning ordinance in recent years. And updating the comprehensive plan reflects a desire to ensure that the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan are in alignment and consistent with one another. And so that's kind of the impetus for the majority of changes that you'll see to the plan text. There were basically three, three main types of changes, as I said, changes to background data, changes in the text, kind of updating the language related to the central area neighborhood. So that's tweaks to the language to reflect the fact that the city now has an R2A permission area and acknowledging that that's an area where the city wants to consider on a case-by-case basis, increased residential density or more unrelated individuals living in a single dwelling unit. But outside of that R2A permission area, wanting to keep the same zoning and residential character in those areas. And then finally, the city, city staff really led the effort to update the existing land use map and the future land use map. And I'll get into the details of those changes in a moment. One thing I did want to mention is, tell you a little bit about the importance of the future land use map. So the future land use map, as you can see in your packets and on the, on the board to my right, kind of, it shows the plan, the future plan for the city. It shows land uses that are desired by the city in the future. So it might show what's there now or it might show something, might, might show a change in the future for certain parcels. And by state statutes, zoning decisions made by the city need to be consistent with this map. And so that's why it's important to make sure that we take a close look at the colors that we're showing on the future land use map because it impacts what type of zoning we can apply later on. The plan also lays out what zoning districts would be appropriate to implement each of these future land use categories. And in several cases, one or more different zoning districts might be appropriate for a given, for a given future land use category. So that's just something to keep in mind. And so when we updated the, the plan text, we made sure that all of your new zoning districts were reflected in the plan text and not your old zoning districts, just to make it extra clear as to what, what this map enables and what it doesn't. So I just wanted to kind of let you all know how we got here today. This has been a multi-month process. We've been working with the staff for, for several months now, beginning with a work session with your city staff in June where we laid out all the issues that we wanted to address with this targeted comprehensive plan amendment. And then in, this past summer, we drafted a public participation plan and that document was recommended by the Plan Commission at a public meeting and recommended by the city council at a public meeting as well. And that document just laid out what the process would be to update the plan and what participation opportunities would be included. So then, summer and fall the past year, we worked closely with staff to update the plan text as well as make changes to the maps, which again, the city staff largely handled. And then on September 12th, I came before the Plan Commission with, with your planner and we, we, excuse me, we reviewed the, the draft plan document with the Plan Commission and took questions and kind of talked about some of the issues that had come up. Following that meeting, we took some time to amend, make, make changes to the, the plan document. And by then, by December 5th, we were ready to have a public hearing draft of the plan document and the map. So that's the, the item that you'll see in your packet, dated December 5th. So this has been available on the city website, available at City Hall, I think through other city channels as well. State statutes requires us to provide 30-day notice for amendments to comprehensive plans. This has been available to the public for 30 days at least. And so tonight, what we're doing is we're having a public hearing. And state statutes require the city council to hold, hold the public hearing. And we think that is a little unusual because the Plan Commission is required to recommend the plan to the council, but if the public hearing is held at the council level, Plan Commission, Plan Commissioners never get the benefit of hearing that public testimony. So we brought you here to this joint meeting tonight because we think that this is a great way to have everybody hear the public testimony all at once. And then while you're all here, if everybody is, you know, finding agreement regarding the plan amendment, the Plan Commission can act on the, act to recommend the plan to the, the council and the council can act that very evening. So we think it's a great way to work through issues all together and kind of take a big look at where the community is going when we're all in one room. I would just like to direct your attention very briefly to, to your agenda for tonight's meeting. It's a little bit of an unusual format and I just wanted to make sure everyone kind of understood what we're doing. So what's, what will happen after Chris and I finish explaining the text and the map changes is that city council will open the public hearing. And so that's under A here. And then there'll be reading of any comments that were submitted to the city prior to this, this meeting. Following that, we will take statements and questions from the public. And Mike and I will be taking notes to ensure that all those questions are addressed later on in the agenda. After the publics finish their questions and statements, we'll turn to the Plan Commission and Common Council. If they have any questions for us, we'll- If they have any questions for us, we'll jot those down as well, and then we'll close the public hearing. And then the next step, following that, is when your city staff and Mike and I will do our best to respond to each and every one of those questions that were proposed to us. Following our responses, then there'll be an opportunity for the Plan Commission and Common Council to discuss any issues that may still be out there, and then if the Plan Commission is ready, they can consider a resolution to recommend the plan to the council. If they do, if they do choose to recommend their, well, if they do take action that night, then Plan Commission's work is done, so they can adjourn, and then the council can resume their regularly scheduled agenda for the evening, and the next item on their agenda would be to take action on the comprehensive plan amendment. Thanks for bearing with me in that, and it's a little unusual, so it's nice to kind of get everyone on the same page.
May I ask a question about public notice? Property owners in areas that either had changes in the future use, land use, or perhaps were adjacent to areas with changes, were they sent specific letters notifying them of that intended change?
We're not required to send specific notices.
What's my question? Were they?
No, they were not.
Question? Yeah, Jackie. Where do smart growth initiatives come into this plan?
Can you expand on that some more?
Well, for instance, the land that we were just talking about, west of the bridge and south of Tratt Street, or, excuse me, Highway Inn, Walworth Street, aren't there state guidelines on smart growth initiatives for mixed use?
So the comprehensive planning law of 1999 was a broad law, and part of it involved procedures which have been followed. Part of it involved the consistency requirement where your zoning actions have to be consistent with the future land use map. And then there were a group of policy recommendations that are generally called smart growth initiatives that call for mixed-use development, multimodal transportation facilities, comprehensive environmental protection, and sound intergovernmental relations. The future land use map has about a dozen recommended changes to it. Those were generated to be consistent with recent zoning and other policy issues, to reflect changes in actual land use since the plan was adopted, and I'd have to defer to staff, but I believe there were three or four changes that reflect policy recommendations for land use parcels by your staff. The categories that are in the comprehensive plan include a future neighborhood category, which is the speckled color on the plan, and a mixed-use category. Both of those categories recommend a broad range of land uses that frequently are found together, and that are encouraged to locate together. For example, multifamily above office or commercial. So the future land use directly reflects that mixed-use directive through those two categories in particular.
And the mixed use would be more to the south, and you propose to have more residential towards the north end?
For that particular parcel?
Yes.
The future land use map does not get into that level of detail, so things are handled in several different ways. One way is to take annexation and zoning map amendments and Platts, one step at a time, and ensure as those accumulate, they add up to a true mixed-use development. That's a reactive approach. A proactive alternative is to adopt a small area plan, not part of this process, that would look at those mixed-use parcels and recommend a desired layout, or several optional layouts, that make sure that city objectives are directly reflected as development proposals come forward. And what you try to do in those is provide for appropriate land use transitions, both within the project and to adjoining properties and nearby properties, ensure the transportation objectives, such as safe intersections, are appropriately addressed, accommodate multimodal accommodations, pedestrian and bicycles being most important in a community like Whitewater, and through a small area plan, if the city chooses to be proactive, I think that's the best option for getting your policies at a level of detail that a comprehensive plan really can't address.
One more question, if I may. This comprehensive plan is a living document, not something set in stone, something to kind of guide us to the next steps as we grow?
Well, having done this for 35 years, I could definitely say my crystal ball is not perfect, and no one's is. It has to be a living document. Communities evolve. We could never have anticipated the aging of the population to the extent that it is across the country. We probably, speaking for myself anyway, I know that 15 years ago, we didn't expect people in their mid-20s to mid-30s to be living with their parents to the degree that is going on right now. So simple cultural and social factors on their own demand that a plan is light on its feet. I think that 20 years ago, no one foresaw the collapse of traditional retail the way that we've seen it. So I would encourage you to amend the plan when it needs to be amended.
Right. There's just, there's a lot of concern that mixed use going, you know, literally across the street from a single-family neighborhood, you know, would be right across the street. So we, I think, most of us would want to see, you know, single-family and maybe zero-lotline duplexes across the street, and then, you know, if there's mixed use, and that's further back or further to the south, that we need to protect the neighborhood.
Right. So there would be three ways to do that. One would be right now, don't make that change, and keep the future neighborhood designation that's been in place historically. A second would be to make that change, but be very careful about the zoning map amendments that you were making. And a third would be to either make or not make, but follow up the comprehensive plan with a small area plan that either guided what the future land use map should be amended to, if you don't change it now?
Yeah.
Or guided the zoning districts that were applied through the rezoning process. The consistency requirement requires that zoning map amendments are consistent with the plan. It does not require the city to say yes for every amendment that comes along. It allows the city to say, wait, the timing isn't right, or the project is too big, scale it down. You have a lot of flexibility in terms of saying no or wait. You're more constrained into what you can say yes.
Thank you for that. I think that puts a lot of our constituents at ease in the fact that, you know, this is just a guide, but there are several more kicks at the cat that we're not doing something wrong here, that we will have more input and more public input as this continues down the road in the future.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So what I'd like to do now is just briefly run you through the text changes in the memo that we provided for you all, that should be in your packet, and then when I'm finished, Chris, your city planner, will guide us through the proposed changes to the maps. So in the memo here, just outlines a kind of a top-level view of the changes that you'll see to the plan text, and again, you should have the markup in your packet as well. So in Chapter Two, we updated the background and demographic data to reflect the most available, most current available census data. Chapter Three, we updated some information about available farmland preservation programs. And Chapter Six, we, again, updated background data related to housing to reflect the current information. Chapter Seven, which is your land use chapter, throughout that chapter, we updated the names of the zoning districts to match your current zoning districts adopted in 2014. We also made some changes to the central area neighborhoods category. This is an area that has been targeted in your current plan for neighborhood preservation, meaning generally, you know, as the plan is written in 2010, there wasn't a desire to see increased density in that area, and that, and the language said that upzonings were discouraged. And so what we've done is just clarify the language in the plan now to match current policy that the city's agreed on through the zoning update, to just clarify that within that R2A permission area, increased occupancy levels are allowed on a case-by-case basis, but outside of that permission area, we desire to see neighborhood preservation and discourage Additionally, we made some adjustments to higher density, the higher-density residential category. The existing text referred to whether or not the city should, where and when the city should consider increased occupancy, so we took out a lot of that language. It has since been resolved by the city through the zoning code update. Finally, at request of city staff, we kind of amped up the mixed-use designation, so we provided some design standards for the mixed-use category, so that, the idea being that mixed-use developments would be more pedestrian-oriented, oriented, you know, more livable places with interactive, kind of lively places to be. So we added some design standards in the mixed-use category to enhance that category and give more direction to developers. And then finally, we did update the land use inventory and data in that chapter, and update the land demand projections to reflect the latest information related to land use. In Chapter Nine, we updated the utilities and community facilities timetable, just to recognize that seven years had passed, and we needed to update some of those target dates. And then in Chapter Ten, which is your economic development chapter, we, again, updated the data to reflect the latest information available. And so with that, I think I'll turn it over to your city planner to run us through the changes to the maps.
Really fast, I just wanted to say, under the acknowledgements, that since I have marked this up, which I believe was in January, like last January, we had changes in the board, and so I would like that update to reflect in, when this is adopted. So I believe Jim Allen needs to be added, and then we also need Tom Miller added to ours. Harry Devitt needs to be removed, and then we also need to put someone under the Parks and Rec. Director. We're currently, Michelle Jarden is serving as interim, so I think that needs to reflect. So I'm just going to really fast talk about the existing land use. Scott, our GIS person, went through and had everything reflecting the latest of what is going on. The original would have had in 2010, is showing what was going on with the existing land use. He did go through parcel by parcel checking it, so it is accurate. Next, we have the future land use, the proposed changes. Got a couple of changes in here. One of the things that he did in this was, he went through, and we had areas in the future land use that the zoning wasn't, or not the zoning, the proposed land use wasn't following parcel lines. That was the first thing that he did clean up, and some of those changes are what we're seeing in this reflecting. So first of all, we have the airport parcel, and this was changed from ag to institutional because it's being used as an airport. Fairhaven was from future neighborhood to mixed use, so we could allow other buildings, such as community buildings, apartments, et cetera. Tech Park to highway commercial along Main Street, there's no longer planning as Tech Park. The removal of the parklands, this was actually one of the examples of following parcel lines. That's, I know you guys had asked me that at the plan board meeting, I couldn't recall, but that's what was going on here, is they were following parcel lines, so that's why it was removed, so. And that's not to say that it can't be, you know, this is the future land use, that's not to say if we want to go in and change part of it to parkland, we can't do that later on, so. DP recycle in the Tech Park to Business Park, I think everybody's pretty familiar with that. The future neighborhood to mixed use, which Cameron's already discussed, community business to multifamily, this is at the corner where we have the Ryan Use Project. Central neighborhood to single-family, this is an area that has come up prior to even me being here. The Plan Commission has decided that that is going to be single-family residence, and so we decided that line in the sand, so that it's now in our future land use, so. All right. Did you guys have any questions or concerns over the maps?
Yeah.
Sure.
I have a question on the first one, the existing land use map.
Sure.
Why do you think Ryan's one remained?
So I don't know how this happened, and we had a call on this, and there are a pile of maps down there that I actually printed. Something got off in our key, and what was weird is, half of the maps that I sent out for you guys are right, and the other half are wrong, and I didn't know which was which. I don't know what happened. We couldn't figure out how that even happened, so I apologize for that, but I believe it was R3, like, the R3 areas, the multifamily, are showing up as manufacturing, and then next to that, there's the, I believe it was, the mobile homes are showing up as high-density. And it was really weird. It showed up like that on our webpage, and then I checked my set, which I had made copies from, like, I printed from the website, and it wasn't like that, so I don't, I really don't know what happened.
So are there any other initial questions of city staff or planners?
Just a comment. Go ahead. Go ahead, Chris.
You went, they went through and checked every parcel, looked at the three colors, or what is?
Just, so, the last one is in 2010, and we, what happens is, so, when we go to, you've been at plan board meetings, so when you guys change a zoning, that gets reported, it gets sent to Scott. Scott then changes it in our real-time map online, and so he went through and checked to make sure that all of those had gotten updated.
What I'm looking at is, I'm looking at the one map that shows the current land use?
Yeah.
And then I'm looking at the proposed future land use.
Sure.
And in my particular case, North Street between Fremont and Park, it suddenly turned into a business district. I didn't know my house was in a business district. It suddenly has turned purple, and it was yellow.
The north side of North Street between Fremont and Park.
Is this on the future land use?
Yeah.
That is, we didn't even, we haven't even touched that. That was from the original, like, prior to us doing the update.
But the front one shows it in yellow, earlier in the book. That's what I'm wondering, questioning, are the colors all right on here?
I can go through it with Scott, but I don't, I don't know that we've had any zoning changes for that, for your area, so I don't know. I know he was pulling stuff, looking at it, so I don't know why that would have changed.
It definitely shouldn't have.
Okay.
Do we have new copies of the current use? Because the existing land use is the one that seems to be wrong, since University Inn is apparently a manufacturing facility, and, I mean, I'm not sure how we're supposed to vote to adopt something that isn't correct.
It brings, it brings me to my next, my next comment, and that is, this is a lot of information. We have conflicting information.
Sure.
And I don't think, at this point, I'm ready to move forward completely tonight. Great to hear all the presentations and input from the public, but I think we've got a ways to go on this.
I would agree. I think there's some issues here in terms of just, I appreciate the work that's been put into this, but it does seem to be not really quite ready for the big time.
I really do apologize. I don't know what happened, because I printed my maps off of what was online, and half of them were.
And I understand that, and that's fine, but the problem is, I don't think that's like, a good enough answer for the public, for us to be having a hearing on a map that isn't right. I also, you know, I just think there's a lot of questions and concerns. I think we're in too big of a hurry to adopt something as meaningful as this, as much as we keep saying we can. As much as we keep saying we can change it and adopt it, and it's living, this just doesn't seem quite ready to be adopted. I almost feel like we're in such a big hurry. I keep hearing, you know, city staff, worked with them, and that's great, I'm glad to hear that, but I've heard very little involvement from the public, who I think this affects the absolute most. I, I think this was an unexpected sort of all-at-once thing, and I'm just not convinced that that's a good idea.
Let me clarify something really fast, because I, I don't know that this has come up quite in the past, and that it probably should have. This rewrite is coming out of our zoning ordinance with the R2A, because right now, we are not in compliance, and it, this probably should have been done prior to the zoning rewrite, but it wasn't, and so this is reactive out of that. The real changes in this are focused on that R2A overlay, not really, sorry, go ahead.
But, but I think most of the changes, we've heard feedback from the public, are not about the R2A.
Saying those are not the only changes here.
It's about the mixed-use change. The biggest change to me was the mixed-use on the southeast west side, which was not driven by the zoning rewrite.
Yes.
So.
And, and again, if that's something that you guys, the other, the other areas in the maps, though, we probably should look at amen, or accepting. If you guys want to put that one on the table, that is fine. But that, that's my, that's, that's the reason that we're looking at this, right?
This is R2A.
But it's not the only reason.
I'm also a little confused on the, like, extraterritorial boundary. Is that what? Sure.
Future.
Yeah, I do.
So there's like, let's say there's three boxes at the top on one, and on one, there's only four boxes at the top.
So.
So if we need existing land use map, I have three thousand now on the updated map, and then on the future language, there's, there's four boxes, and that's territory.
Guys, we have a serious problem if we're not even sure we're all looking at the same document. Like, this is a bigger problem than just minor things, where I don't even know if we're all looking at the same thing. I mean, this is not okay.
I think, you're talking about, on this proposed existing land use map, there's three up here, the extraterritorial boundaries are not on the existing land use map.
They were on prior one, though, so that's why.
I don't think they need to be on the existing.
So I think, I think the question is, what is council comfortable moving forward? Do we want to have the public hearing, get all that feedback, but then defer any action on?
Mr. Binning?
Before going there, if I could back up to a more general question. Per the state comprehensive planning law, there are, as I understand it, two different things that can be done to the comprehensive plan. One is amending it, the other is updating it. This, to me, feels like kind of a hybrid between the two, and I'm not sure we're really clear on what we're doing. As Chris indicated, we really should have amended it long ago. I think the state statute contemplates that you'll be making amendments probably every year or two maybe, or at least every few years, not waiting for as long as what we have, and certainly there have been changes that, that we kind of got the cart in front of the horse, frankly. On the other hand, the requirement is, as I understand it, that we have to update the comp plan at least every decade. Well, we're only two years away from being required to update it. What I'm seeing here is, we're doing a lot of amending, but we've also been quite a bit of updating, and are we contemplating that already in another two years, we're going to have to do an update, even though we're doing quite a bit of updating, and shouldn't we be trying to get all the updating done right now, rather than saying, oh, well, we're doing some updating, but in two years, we're going to have to update the thing again? It would be my opinion that the level of effort that's been put forth for this effort would be consistent with an amendment, and not with the requirements for a full update. The, the full 10-year update, which will be coming due in 2020.
So how much more would you have to do to make an update? What are we missing?
Well, the way it's written right now, it says we contemplate updating it by the year 2019. Maybe the fact that we barely made it into 2010, when we adopted it, is where you're coming from, but it was barely into, so essentially, it's a 2019 requirement. So for the full decennial update, typically, there is significantly more interactive public participation in the early stages of the plan. The data changes that are made are consistent with an amendment. The updating of the existing land use is consistent with an amendment. The changes to the future land use map that reflect policy decisions that have been made or reflect changes in existing land use are consistent with an amendment. The other changes to the future land use map, and I believe it's just a handful of changes, Mr. Binning, I think, described those as hybrid-like, and sometimes they happen in an amendment, sometimes they happen in a full update. The most significant difference is, the level of participation for this effort was consistent with the amendments, not with the full update. I guess the thing that frustrates my perfectionism side is, we get some of the stuff up to the current date, but a lot of other stuff is really outdated. For example, we're saying, well, in the future, we're going to be doing a major update to the wastewater treatment plant. Well, that's well underway right now, so it feels pretty dated to be still leaving that sort of thing in here. Another thing being major employers. Well, there are at least two major employers that don't exist anymore in the city, and it feels, again, dated to be kind of updating it, but yet not updating something is, is really very major as a loss of some major employers. Another thing that I'd say seems to me to be appropriate to mention here somehow at this point, is the fact that we've lost our only independent grocery store. And in one of the surveys that was done of the public back around the time that this document was adopted, grocery stores was one of the most important things the public commented on. At that time, we had a freestanding grocery store. Now we don't, and I, I think it's a major concern of a large portion of our population, and I can't see adopting any kind of update, amendment, whatever, to the document without mentioning that. I don't think we should go another two years before we say in the document, the lack of an independent grocery store is a major concern.
I guess, well, I appreciated, you know, the, bringing both groups together and having it done as one. I mean, I think that's partially why we have a Plan Commission, to vet these things prior to them coming to the final body for adoption. So, you know, if we would have been able to split it up, most of this stuff hopefully would have been addressed at the Plan Commission level before we're now having our public hearing, and even having it expected on here to be adopted tonight. So, I mean, I appreciate what the, the effort was, but it seems like in the future, we should probably split those two things up, just to have a little check and balance, and have a better vetting of, of proposals prior to them coming to, to us here at the council, or even for the Plan Commission. You know, because I feel, I, I've heard from several members, I'm not particularly comfortable adopting anything tonight. Are we even ready to have a public hearing on something that, as Lynn has pointed out, as Stephanie has pointed out, has errors or omissions? Should we put this back to the Plan Commission, let them work on it, and then bring it back for a public hearing, even though I know there are several people in the audience that have come here tonight, which we apologize to if, if we do end up delaying it, but, I mean, we have to do our job properly as well.
I think if we're not adopting anything tonight, we would postpone the public hearing. And I appreciate all the work that the Plan Commission has done, but you have us, have an advantage on us that, you know, we've only looked at this for a couple days, and there's just a ton of material, and we have lots of questions. So how you want to proceed and go back to Plan Commissioner, or for us to proceed here on council, is up to the board, but I'm not ready to move forward either.
I would like to move it back to the Plan Commission.
How would you suggest?
Yeah, that's fine. We can certainly, if it's the wish and desire of everyone here tonight, and given some of the questions that have come up, that we come back to the, we'll just repeat the process with the Plan Commission. However, I'm, some question regarding the comments that were made regarding the update versus amendment. Maybe they could also be vetted at the Plan Commission before we go any further to see if we want to just now turn and do the full update, rather than, rather than just the amendment. So that's, from the staff perspective, we can come together again, city planner, myself, and Bandwell, and, and come back to the Plan Commission for a more in-depth discussion and, and moving forward.
Plan Commissioners, do you have any comment at this point?
I agree with what, what the council has said, and I would rather see a complete update. I don't think we have to wait until 2019 to do the update, because the grocery can't wait.
Yeah.
I agree we're not doing, kind of now, or later.
Yeah.
I, I think that makes good sense, too. I, I agree with that.
Okay. While we did indicate that we should take some action as council to direct it back to the Plan Commission.
I would, I would move it back to the Mission.
Let me just clear, so to move it back, but to look at a full?
A full update.
Full update. All right. Stephanie goes on.
Yeah, great.
Who said a question?
I just wanted to, before we have to be able to listen to the call today, that's here, and wants to be announced. Can't wait to.
I mean, if we're going to move it off, and we're not going to have the public hearing...
I, I don't necessarily think we have an issue hearing from them, but I think a lot of what they are here to express concerns about would be addressed already, once it comes back, hopefully.
And of course, when it does come back to the council, it'll be a full public hearing when it comes back to the council. Consultants indicate this is a little different than what you usually see where there's a public hearing at the Plan Commission level, and then the plan, and then it's recommended to you without a formal public hearing. But clearly, it, things could be sort of work sessioned at the Plan Commission level, and then ultimately, they do a resolution to bring it to you, so there's no problem with it, but just to make sure everybody knows, there will be a full, full-blown public hearing when it gets back to the council.
But there's nothing preventing the, the Plan Commission from holding their own public hearing.
Oh, right, and, well, every, every Plan Commission hearing, every Plan Commission meeting is by operation of our transparency law, is, there would be public input invited, so, correct.
And I guess, too, kind of similarly, it was kind of an issue we ran into with the lockbox issue, where, you know, we said to public members, you know, we met our requirements for posting the meeting, and they said, well, you still could have sent us a letter, and I would like to see adjacent property owners where the use of land is being proposed to be changed, get that specific notice, because not every citizen is checking our website to see what we're talking about. And I do think that there are some things in here that substantially impact residents.
Yeah, I'll put that as part of the motion, yeah.
Is that okay, Chris?
I think that if we do that, we need to come up with a policy so we know how many, how, the, the offset for when we change this, because like, we have to notify for a rezone, we have to like notify X amount of, like 200 yards where all the residents are around, and right now, we could do 200, 500, there's no cutoffs, so we need to come up with a policy for that.
For this purpose, can we leave it up to the Plan Commission to exercise that discretion?
I think you can exercise some reasonable levels of, you know, it was expressed to me by citizens, that they felt that they should have been given notice specifically, and I don't see any harm in that.
While we've got the Bandwell consultants here, question that I've often had is whether it meets state statute to do that notice in the fashion that I've sometimes seen in larger metro areas, where you simply put up a sign on the property that's being proposed to be changed, rather than sending out all these notices. Does that meet the requirement?
What, didn't they just say they don't have a requirement?
Correct. There is no requirement for notifying, for example, a conditional use, there's very specific requirements that, is it 300 feet, maybe, that you have to notify neighboring property owners. But for this, there is not, as the consultants said.
So we really could just make a policy and decide that we were going to do it that way?
Right, I mean, it may well be that, that 300 feet one, or whatever the conditional use one and the zoning ones are, might be a good, good starting place to look at, because there's a, that's been well thought out, and this is kind of like a zoning change, but it's not, but it may be a good guide to use for sending out notice. Maybe not on every, some of these are already been done, of course, and for example, the, the Hughes property is already done, so that expectation wouldn't, you wouldn't expect that one, but the one on Walworth would seem to be the primary one, where you might want to use conditional use and zoning-type requirements as far as notice, just to cover the concerns Stephanie has raised.
Tom?
Yeah, just to echo what you're referring to, my property line happens to be right on Walworth, and we're talking right across the street as we're over, and we're talking about the use. So in talking with my neighbors, I can tell you that there is a lot of these, and people are not aware of any of the changes that we're talking about here tonight. So, you know, I think that without, you know, without, without a lot of definition as to exactly what is going to be happening, you know, I don't think that it's a very popular choice to do mixed-use with that at home. I understand that towards the, the highway, that that's good commercial use, but just to plain say that it's all mixed-use without any conditions, to me, you know, I don't think that it's going to be very popular.
If I could just, since Lynn brought up asking the consultants while they're here, this is for Mike and Jackie, you talked about a small area plan. The question I would have, is that something that would be part of the comprehensive plan, or is that sort of a side reference document? Or could it be either?
It could be either, and I think the, the key question is whether you want the consistency requirement that is attached to the comprehensive plan to attach to it. So one of the, one of the challenges with a small area plan is it's quite specific, and almost impossible to get a proposal that matches it exactly.
Probably better to just have it as a side planning document.
Right, because we show buildings, and that building could be scaled to be 310 feet long, and the proposal comes in to be 295 feet long. Not consistent.
All right. Is there any further discussion at this point?
I'm sure you've already looked at the timeline, and you expect that we're back and go over all the plans.
Refer to the Plan Commission.
Or the consultants. You know, if we are going to do a full update, what, what does that look like in terms of a timeline, then?
It, it seems to me, as someone who's been observing the process, that a lot of the technical work, although not all of the technical work is mentioned by Mr. Binning, has been accomplished. So I think the, the critical path will be the amount of public participation and the variety of public participation that you want to invest in prior to getting a revised document.
And what does that traditionally look like when you've done that in other communities in terms of?
So typically, that's two to four months, depending on the range of activities that are involved.
Did that answer your question, Christine?
And then can determine that whether it's two or four months, how will that affect that?
Well, that will, in part, need to be budgeted for. So the, the, I think what we can do is provide a menu to staff, and... So, the, the, I think what we can do is provide a menu to staff, and staff can work with the Commission and the council, because there'll be budgetary implications, to consider the, the mix of participation that seems right for the process. And if I could offer, if, if you're going to invest in that degree of participation and those expenses, my recommendation would, to go for the full decennial update, even though it may be a year before it needs to be done. And even though I raised the subject, it may be pushing ourselves too fast budgetarily, for one thing. I mean, I think I referred to it as being two years. The reality is, if it's not due until, I believe, January of 2020, it was adopted in January, February, as I recall, we're actually three years away from the requirement at this time. So, realistically, to meet the statute, we could be working on this in 2019, rather than 2017 or 2018. I'm not sure that, at this point, we'd have public input for massive changes, though, to the document. I'm not sure in another two years, we'll likely have that either. It's not like we're that fast a growing community, frankly, nor do I think we're going to be within the next two to three years. So, if, if I could, there is a technical challenge that your rezoning actions created in relation to the plan. So, if there is a desire to slow down on the full update, it may be a good idea to come back with a shrunken technical update that addresses what I think was the original motivator behind doing these changes now. And, and that, that would be an alternative that would be far less costly and far less time-consuming.
I would just quickly state, I agree with that, and I think it's fairly simple, and I would recommend maybe carving out a few of these things that are really, should be real, really pretty straightforward, but I expect no controversy, to just clean up a few areas that are, probably should be cleaned up now. Almost could be done theoretically tonight, but I don't want to jump into that. But for example, the Hughes property one, there's something that could be done tonight, probably. Is that, Hannah?
Yes. And to add to that, I think, you know, if there's anything that is not, the real, I think, just from where I, where I sit in this whole, this whole thing, there, the mistakes that we thought were resolved but were clearly not with the maps, as well as the, the question of the use of one particular piece are, are the big issues to address. And we can simply review all of the material and come back with that in not, not much time in terms of turnaround. I think that, I would, I would suggest that outside of those things, the need to provide notice more broadly than what is required, you know, I don't know that many, if any, of these are going to be a red flag for anyone. They're mostly the kinds of things that get passed while we're sleeping, because nobody wants to have to stay awake to, to look at it. They're relatively simple, I guess, is what I've tried to get at. So, if there's, just, if there is a desire to do any approvals tonight, certainly let's do that. If there is not, I think that we could approve this amendment, come back with perhaps more detail and description of what, what every piece entails. It's all in the documentation, but come to you with that discussion here and, and show everyone that. And then, following that, pass what is an amendment to our existing plan, understanding that we're going to have to spend a lot more to get the update accomplished. And that, as, as the discussion was, I'm glad we're talking about it, and that Mike said something, and that Wally said something as well, was slowly becoming more and more of a concern as we talk about all that we want to be updating and the costs that that will, that we'll incur to do that, so.
I would probably lose the heart there, carve it out for tonight, but I think probably bringing something back, very simple and non-controversial, to just clean up some of the technical difficulties would be the way to go, from the perspective of just getting some of the, the easy ones done, but not tonight. I think it'd be a little hard to try and tell the public what they can and can't talk about, and, and also, there's some map issues that should probably be cleaned up too. So, I'd, I'd withdraw the suggestion that you try and do it tonight.
So, I think the motion was to refer this back to the Plan Commission in terms of this scope. Let them scrub it, get everything lined up, and then bring it back to us, even if that's the more tech, just the technical cleanup of what we were really going to take on tonight. And also, maybe vetting that southwest corner addition with some public notice. And then, if the Plan Commission wanted to start talking about a long-term plan to do the full update and how we could use what we've already done with this into that, I'm sure city staff and Van De Walle, you know, can work with the Plan Commission on that, and then come back to, to us with, with the full plan.
No matter how one feels about the sanctity of the original zoning that particular parcel on Walworth Street, those of us who've been involved with the Plan Commission and county council for a long time would not be surprised if privacy is controversial. This is a recurring issue about the existing zoning and how it will be reused. We've had different proposals in the past, so we want to make sure that, I'd like to make sure that going forward, all of us are informed enough to be able to make the appropriate decisions. So, I'm a visual person, so I hear three different options. I can't process it. So, I really want to have some type of organ, look at the options, understand the implications, understand how they might fit into our particular, the way we do our zoning in our community, so we can make a thoughtful decision. And also, one that is going to make, that is going to make sense to prevent, will come and have concerns about others, and have implications for their neighborhood. So, it sounded like there were a couple of options that may be practicable or not, but we still know what we're talking about when we're making decisions. So, we all know that there are certain projects and certain courses of land in the town, in time, and time, people feel struggling about it. So, we always have to, and it is, Stephanie would agree, err on the side of, let's, let's notice people, let's give them every opportunity to weigh in. So, I really, this is done, we really put a highest degree of transparency to inclusion on it. So, and then please help us to do our job going forward.
Okay.
We know you've got a lot of work in this already, and we, we do appreciate it.
All right. Is there any further discussion from council, Mr. Binney?
Could we get the motion restated? My concern being that, right now, I think we've, we're essentially asking Plan Commission to proceed with the update, and now we seem to be backing off of that.
Michelle, do you want to repeat that?
Sure. It was done in two sections, so I apologize if I don't have it all. Send this to Plan Commission to discuss a possible full update, and regardless, make corrections, even if just technical, and clean up the errors. And the southwest corner off of Walworth Avenue should be discussed and brought back.
And there was also the public noticing, affected parts of it.
Sure.
Can we just get back to that one, on seeing whether it's 200 feet or 300 feet?
What is this, do you know what this zoning one is?
Wally and Chris.
Is it 300?
Yeah.
300, I guess, yeah. Because I think, you know, at least some of the people I talked to in that neighborhood were thinking it was a rezone, you know, when they heard that the comp plan was going to be changed. I don't think people distinguished sometime on the technical details of what is a comp plan amendment versus a rezoning. So, if we just followed the rezoning guidelines, I think we'd be safe, because if then that parcel was rezoned, those would be the same people that would be notified at that point in time as well.
And the notifications, if you could clarify that to make it a little more understandable for the public as to what is being done, I think that would help too, so.
Well, I think that is one of the issues. You know, the misconception about a rezone would have been answered in a letter. It would have been explained that this is not a rezone, this is a discussion of the potential future use of this land and opening more doors for its use, and I think that would help.
It is 300 feet, so.
It would raise concerns either way.
All right. Is that work? Okay. All right, so the motion from council is, as Michelle stated, is there any further discussion from council? All right, we'll call Michelle.
Binney?
I'm.
Gittle?
Aye.
Singer?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Magnus?
Aye.
Grady?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Plan Commission, do you have any other action or?
No, if, if that is it, then I will, I will motion to adjourn.
All in favor? You have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Ayes, hevets, so ordered. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Yeah.
All right. Next up, we have hearing of citizen comments, the city manager and staff reports, we don't have anything for that tonight. Next up, we have hearing of citizen comments, no formal common council action will be taken during this meeting, although issues raised become, become part of a future agenda. Participants are allowed a three-minute speaking period, and although specific items listed on the agenda may not be discussed at this time, we definitely allow for public input when those items come up for debate. So, if there's anything not on the agenda, please come up and state your name and address to the record. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to resolutions. R1, supporting completion of environmental impact study for U.S. Highway 12 extension project. Cameron?
Yes, and I know that representatives from the Greater Whitewater Committee in our community are also here tonight if they want to say anything, but I will first take time to briefly state, this is a resolution that is meant to be, is intended to be similar to a resolution that was adopted by the County Board of Supervisors or discussed by, as, at their most recent meeting. And it is just reaffirming in the face of the next biennial budget and discussions that will be had regarding transportation, reaffirming that our desire as a community, but united with the desires of our Walworth County, in which we, a majority of our city is located, that we genuinely want to continue, or see continued and completed, the work of the environmental impact study on the Highway 12 extension from Elkhorn to Whitewater, and then follow that up with a plan for executing construction of that highway, that extension. There, we've known for years that it's, it would be a huge benefit for this community to be able to have that connection, and it would be a boon to our, our business community here in Whitewater, especially those that operate, operate companies involved with transportation of goods. And so, we want to just state and keep ever present, ever present before the face of our legislators and governor's office, that we have a genuine desire and feel justification in recommending and continuing to prod, if that's the right word, prod them to be focused on and remember this project.
Move R1.
Second.
All right, so movement's second. Is there any other discussion or any public comment? And Mr. Binney first, and then we'll turn over.
Can we have, please, a description of how far this study has gone? I guess I thought that it had already proceeded very well, so obviously, it hasn't gotten as far as what we were hoping.
I'm Jeff Knight, and I'm here, basically, I'm involved, the Greater Whitewater Committee has been involved with this, along with the city, along with the Town of LaGrange, along with the Lauderdale Lakes Association and the county. And back in the summer of last year, well, first, let's start, we held a big meeting in Whitewater, DOT attended, they made promises that they would be including discussions with our businesses, and that they were also going to do public outreach into the Lauderdale Lakes and the Redline area. In June, they got back to us that they were doing a purposes and needs review, not a EIS, and they planned to meet with the Federal Highway Administration to go over those purposes and needs. I got a call from Brian Bliesner, who was the project manager, saying they were going to pull the plug on the Highway 12 EIS. So, I immediately called the governor's office, and then they referred me to the Department of Transportation, and I talked with Tom Rattigan, who is their executive assistant. He's basically their governmental affairs lobbyist with the legislature and the governor. And they promised, Brian Bliesner promised, come out and brief us, do a full briefing, we could invite everybody, so we could hear what went into that decision. So, knowing that Brian was going to brief us, I couldn't give Tom Rattigan the exact questions we would have. So, finally, I did send him a communication to DOT, because they had indicated that Sewer PAC was in agreement. Well, I got together with Nancy Russell, who's the county board chair, who also serves on the Sewer PAC, and she was able to get us a letter from Ken Yonker, basically saying that not only is the need still there, the need is still now, contrary to what we had received back from DOT. Also, I wanted to know what went in the traffic count, because we saw some traffic counters in the area that happened to be here when the students weren't here, which is really an amazing time to count cars in Whitewater, but they did. And then, what we heard from our friends at the Redline Group over at Lauderdale Lakes is that they did the traffic count over in that area in February, which is, again, a very unusual time to count cars if you're, so now, so I put that, my communication back to Tom Rattigan, that we wanted to know about the traffic count when and where. And also, we asked for a request to all the industries that DOT met with and the responses, and then also, in my letter, I requested a review of all the public input. Then I got a call immediately as a result of that from Dwayne, Dwayne Johnson, who used to be the district director, is now the deputy administrator, and fairly long conversation on the phone. And so, I again reiterated my questions, and he said, "We'll set up a meeting." Well, two weeks went by, and another meeting never came up to buy. So, I sent him an email on December 30th requesting that, "Look, this time is, this clock is going way too fast, and you guys don't seem to be responding, we want to meet." So, they did call a meeting real quickly, and then, so the county board chair had wanted to go, but she had a conflict, folks from the Redline did, but it was like, "Call me one day, we'll meet tomorrow," whether people there. And so, having waited so long, I decided, "I'm not going to say I can't be there." I changed my schedule, I went alone, and so, a lot of conversations, a lot about finances. They basically said that in light of some of the numbers they saw, that they felt it wasn't worth doing now, because then they couldn't build it soon enough. Of course, we all know that we were trying to get the delineation decided, so you could do some planning. We've never asked for the road to be built until the needs outweighed other projects around the state. So, having worked in the state for a while, they, they said that the meeting with the Federal Highway Administration was fairly informal. So, my response to them is, "Well, I don't recall many meetings like that being informal, and there must be some email communication and some policy papers that were exchanged." So, I gave them a list of eight follow-up questions that now we have required that they provide, and they promised to get me two or three dates near the end of the month where we could go over those. And the questions I've asked is to receive documentation of written communication notes from their conversations with the Federal Highway Administration, documentation of the federal fiscal budget that was used in determining our project, competency, a copy of their solvency report, and a copy of both the 2012 and 2015 traffic count. They decided to use a 2012 traffic count as opposed to their 2015, suggesting there were some outliers. And why they used 2012, and I've just requested to see both, because I can determine, and you guys can all see what we're talking about once you see all of them put together, ask for a copy of the Trans 210 purposes and need report and budget, a matrix, and one of the discussions was, "Well, how this fits in with the overall?" So, I said, "Well, hey, we're in the modern times, that spreadsheet's there, let me see the matrix of all your major priority projects and how we compare, so that we can judge, you know, all right, should we wait, shouldn't we?" And also, the cost-benefit analysis... And also, the cost benefit analysis and the condition report, I also suggested to them that they might want to look at Highway 14 and 89. I know we have one industry in town that no longer takes their product to Rockford on that route, it's so bad, they're now going 59 to 26 to 90, let's take them 10 minutes each way longer. And that I also raised with the county board. So, I attended a county board transportation committee, they had recommended the resolution, went to the county board last week, and they were unanimous in recommending this. My ask for you is that, one, you adopt the resolution, and you send it to everybody, the governor, the secretary, all the state representatives from the region, including Congressman Ryan, but I also asked that somebody from the city be assigned to go with me when those transportation meetings are called near the end of January, so that we can show them that there's a unified front on why there's an absolute need. I met, I've also met with the Redline Group, there's 1,300 strong, they're very concerned about where this is going, and why their bigger concern is the delay, and then they continue to do improvements on the current 12, that eventually, that becomes the corridor. And the problem with that is the expense, because of the frontage roads and the widening and the environmental impact in that area, that it would be extremely more expensive to do four lanes on the current route than it would be if they do the direct route on the, that Redline. Now, I think everybody knew that DOT had asked for veto of the EIS and the budget, governor didn't grant that veto and left it in. I'm not prepared to talk to any state representatives or the governor on a one-on-one yet, until we get these questions answered, because they may in fact have a legitimate reason in what they're doing, but certainly would be helpful if they would do what they promised last June, to do a full briefing in the area, so we could all be there and ask the questions that each of us would had, okay. Now, some people are concerned that seem to be Walworth County, it's like an island, and it's a lot of money being spent in Milwaukee, and a lot of money being spent in Madison. I can tell you this, that I'm more convinced that we have a serious sustainability of our road transportation fund and what's all needed, and I think the discussion needs to be parallel tracks, that if in fact this is all fiscal, and then, at some point in time, they need to address, well, how do you adequately fund roads? I think the issue really is, efficiency of cars has improved, the gas tax was capped, shortfall is close to a billion dollars, and they're hitting the 60-year lifespan of those major intersections in Milwaukee and Madison, and they're falling apart, so there's no choice. So, this is, and in Madison, what's going on is there seems to be loggerheads between the governor and the speaker, as to what exactly is the final solution. So, there's a lot of tension being paid to this. I think, in all fairness, I think we're being caught in the squeeze in the middle of the edges, and it was convenient to not have a larger gap in what they were requesting. So, there, I think we're one of six projects statewide that were kind of tabled, and so the amount of money that they're requesting the budget compared to how much they're missing might have been a bigger issue to discuss. So, I hope that's helpful answering your question. We've been very, very engaged the last couple of weeks on this, all of December, it's really starting to pop.
Any other questions for Jeff at this point?
Just a comment, that I'll be in touch with you, so that we can go together.
Okay, good.
Thanks for all your work.
Yeah, this is great.
For all of us.
All right, is there any further discussion? Mr. Binney?
Just a question about who's got the document, so that I can get a typo corrected.
A clerk? Yep. All right, is there any further discussion? All right, we'll call Michelle.
Brady? Aye.
Singer?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Langness?
Aye.
Brady?
Aye.
Binney?
Aye.
All right, motion passed, move on to C1. First up is consideration of and possible direction regarding uniform rental services.
Thank you. I have some clothing samples, I'll pass it off.
I know this, I'm going to bring it back.
I think clothing.
Look like great jeans.
Going to keep them?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so, thank you. So, this item's brought up after I had discussions with the three Public Works superintendents, and they expressed a desire to have more consistent professional look for their full-time Public Works employees. We received two price quotes for uniform rental maintenance and cleaning services, one from Sintas, one from Aramark. The jeans, the, the two shirts will be labeled Aramark and Sintas, and then the jeans, the Carhartt is Sintas, and the Dickies is Aramark. So, after reviewing the price quotes and the materials, the three superintendents strongly wanted to recommend going with Sintas, primarily for the quality of the materials. The two shirts, the Sintas shirts seem to seem more breathable, and as you know, our Public Works employees are in the summertime working outside in very hot conditions. With the jeans, the Sintas premium jean was the Carhartt, the Aramark premium jean were Dickies. All three superintendents had experienced wearing and working with both types of jeans, and strongly preferred Sintas for the quality and comfort of material, and also, they felt the cuts that Carhartt provided were more comfortable. So, the Sintas agreement is a three-year agreement. The annual cost would be about $8,000 for the rental maintenance and cleaning services. There would be a one-time cost upfront for the labels on each shirt, which would, one would probably say Obsidian Whitewater, the other one would be Public Works or the Division. And so, this would be for the full-time Public Works employees, and also the two building maintenance employees. So, it is, the price quote for the Aramark was a little over $5,200 compared to the $8,000 for the Sintas, but just based, again, on the quality of materials. Staff is recommending entering a three-year agreement with Sintas. And one of the ways that we would help pay for it is currently, our employees receive a, an annual $250 per year allowance for clothing and boot allowances, and we'd recommend reducing that down to $75 per employee, and that would provide an annual savings there of $3,500 to bring down the net, net cost quite a bit. And then, that $75 would be used to help buy steel toe boots for the employees. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'm assuming they're going with brighter colors in those, or are those the?
There'd be, there's a lumber of different colors. If they're working on the street, we'd still require them to wear a bright vest, a mesh vest on top of it, but we were thinking that we'd probably narrow it down to a few colors and let each different division choose which color, you know, their employees would prefer to go with. You know, they might want like a lighter color, just for summertime purposes.
Stick with the darker colors.
Yeah, you want dark colors.
Mr. Allen?
I have some experience in these contracts, and can save you a bit of money. All their little tiny extra charges, they all add up.
Right.
And they will ding you to death, and if you negotiate with them, you can have those pretty much all removed.
Mm-hmm. Right, yeah, in the contract, we did review all the costs, and a lot of the costs were waived, and some of the costs, for example, you know, there's a makeup charge, where essentially it's just for new hires, it wouldn't apply for the install. We have gone through all of these. There's a size change, $5 per garment, but that's only applies to if an employee wants it changed within the first four weeks, which sometimes they have experienced, they go to organizations, some employees just say, forget it, I don't want to go to your fitting, your initial fitting, then they get their uniforms and say, well, it doesn't fit. So, only within the first four weeks that would apply. If we have any employees that have a weight change, so they need a different size, they would give us new sizes for no additional charge. If the garments wear out from just normal wear and tear, they'll replace those at no charge. So, that's another reason why we like the Sintas, was there really were not many hidden charges, and they're all laid out in the first few pages of the contract.
Again, most of these fees you can get waived.
Wow.
If you negotiate with them. They add up rather quickly. It's, I mean, I liken this to signing an agreement with MasterCard. Oh, we're going to give you a 2.3% rate, great. But do you know in the small print, in the next 23 pages, that, for instance, each time you swipe a card in a card reader, it's a dime? If it doesn't read, and you have an employee that swipes it 10 times, there's a dollar. There's an international card, it's five bucks more. You know, they're just fees upon fees upon fees in these type of contracts, and I can see a lot of them here, but I'm, I'm betting that if you talk with them, you can get most of those knocked off.
Okay.
I've done it.
Sure, we can do that.
Yeah. I was just going to say, we will look at that. If you have any that you've highlighted from your experience, Jim, that you've got concerns about specifically, it might be good if you could take a moment with city staff either after, or we can give you a call tomorrow. Maybe sometime where maybe you can go over, go over some of those, if you'd be willing. I don't know that I'll have time tomorrow, but. Or sometime very near future. Chris is a very smart person, and, you know, just giving him the knowledge that these are negotiable, let's let him run with that, as far as I'm concerned. Fair enough. Sounds good to me.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any action on this item?
Yeah, I'll move it.
Second.
So, in a second, approve Sintas, sticking with Sintas. Is there any further discussion? All right, we'll call Michelle.
Singer?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Langness?
Aye.
Brady?
Aye.
Binney?
Aye.
Gable? Aye.
Singer?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Langness?
Aye.
Brady?
Aye.
Binney?
Aye.
Gable?
Aye.
Singer?
Aye.
All right, motion passed, move on to C3, update on recruitment processes for current director vacancies. Cameron?
Very briefly, just letting everyone know, we have three currently out. Our park and recreation, park and recreation director position, which closes at the end of this month, the finance director position, which is now titled as Change of Finance and Administrative Services Director. That position is out, and I, I'm forgetting the actual due date. Judy, do you have the?
It's got to be man's card.
Okay, February 14th or so, and then the CDA director position as well is currently out for recruitment. So, those are, we're in full force, and in those areas where we're doing those recruitments, we also have staff filling in because those spots are, at least in the park and rec and the finance positions are vacant. Be happy to answer other questions if you have any, otherwise, I'll bring more, more update at every meeting until we've got them filled.
Any questions? All right, so next up is C4, authorization entered a consulting agreement with Pat Cannon to provide financial oversight assistance to the city in the absence of a finance director. Cameron?
Thank you, and I don't see my paper at the moment, but I can just go over real briefly. What we're looking at here is, in the, in the absence of our finance director, we have a lot going on currently with city staff. Karen is more than capable of handling day-to-day operations there. We just, we, our current CDA director, who is someone that we've, we pay as a, as an outside party coming in to fill that, that vacancy, is well-versed in city administration and financials, and I, I have had a conversation with him about the possibility of spending just a few hours tops, a few hours a week, and helping with, with any overall recommendations, suggestions, or anything that with his experience, he can see on the horizon that, that I might in my own, my own experience, more limited experience, or Karen's experience not see. So, being able to have him on, on hand is what this request is for. He currently operates at a cost of 70, 70, excuse me, 7, $0 an hour. We would be able to have him in at that same amount for those two to three hours. I apologize, the totals, hopefully you have them, my packet. I must have just pulled this paper out for some reason, but the, the total amount, the total cost, thank you, about $2,100 would fall well within savings from the lack of a finance director currently, in spite of also, I mean, that's, that includes time and resources that are being spent to compensate Karen for her added responsibilities.
All right. Are there any questions or action on this? Mr. Binney?
I think it's appropriate, the only thing I'd suggest to be included in his purview is making sure that we're ready for the annual audit. You know, if you get to that point, and everything's not really buttoned down, you can have the auditors thinking that they should be billing for extra hours, and we really want to try to avoid that. With that said, I'd move approval.
Second.
All right, so moved in second to approve the consulting agreement with Pat Cannon. Is there any further discussion? All right, we'll call Michelle.
Allen?
Aye.
Langness?
Aye.
Brady?
Aye.
Binney?
Aye.
Gable?
Aye.
Singer?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
C7, adoption of 2017 salary resolution, we will not be taking up tonight, so our last order of business is adjournment.
So moved. So moved.
Second. It's a move in a second to adjourn, is there, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no?